For.
So I'll call the September nineteenth meeting of the Oro Town Council to order. This is a meeting of the council committees and we have three different committee meetings tonight. We're going to start with community development. We're going to go on to. Compromising plan implementation committee and we're going to end up with finance and operations. Roll call shows that all councilors are present. Some like to make a brand entrance. And welcome our guests tonight. And with that, we will. Go to Council Wingard and chairs Community Development Committee.
Now we have a presentation by the Oro Public Library Foundation related to the expansion of the Oro Public Library and I would. Remind everyone that in committee, we're not. Making decisions, but we're gathering information and having this stuff. Sophie, do you have any other introduction?
Sure, um, do you want me to start? Laurie was a little bit James Jackson Samor, I think is going to be representing the group. Bill has a PowerPoint presentation for the group. For folks who are not aware, the Orno Public Library Foundation is an independent private five oh one C three. That was actually created back in two thousand six.
I have a slide.
Two, alright. It's a unique in two thousand two. Um, it's a unique relationship in that. The foundation kind of acts as its own independent body. Laurie Carpenter, the library director and I both serve as in an ex officio capacity. We don't make decisions. We don't. Do we're not supposed to do a lot of the work. But we are there to inform the foundation what. What they might need to know about library needs or town constraints. They have been instru- they were instrumental in raising a large portion of the funding that was used to. Construct the current freestanding Orno Public Library. And also during my tenure, they raised a little over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and constructed the Orno Village Green. So the way it works is the foundation raises money. They gift it to the town along with design. And then the town is responsible for accepting that money and also carrying out. The the design and sometimes we have to work very closely together during construction to make sure that we are designing what was. What the money was raised for. So. As a town council, the foundation is here to kind of make you aware of some things that are going on. They've been in front of. Town council just in the last year or so to talk about a project. It's important that we remember that there is a very clear division here. Town council doesn't control what the foundation does. However, the town is not obligated to accept gifts from the foundation. So. Good communication is important to make sure we're not raising money or they're not embarking on projects that the town would have difficulty. Carrying. Is that fair?
I think that sounds great. Yeah.
There you go.
Very well, good evening. First, I want to thank all of you for having us on the agenda tonight to talk about the library. I also want to thank everyone who's come out tonight to hear about what we've been thinking. And whether they're in person, and I think you might even have some virtually to help show support for the library. And to hear about our goals for expanding the library. Sophie gave some good backgrounds. I'm James Jackson Samor. I'm the president of the Orno Public Library Foundation. So before we get into our current thoughts. Reiterating a little bit about what Sophie just said. But the the foundation is a five oh one C three nonprofit. We were established about twenty years ago with the goal of raising capital funds to help build the library that we currently have. We are one of three organizations that work to support the library. The others are the trustees and the friends of the Orno Public Library. We each have different focuses for our activity and the foundation really focuses on providing. I capital and ongoing support focused primarily on the library building is library grants. So next slide. So today I want to talk about what we hope and plan could be the. Expansion of the library building and the needs of the community that help bring about that expansion. And so just to get suspense out of the way, here's an early conceptual drawing of what we hope to accomplish with the facility. And there's a better view on the next slide. So very early, very draft, but it shows some expansion that I'll talk a little bit about. If the council or the subcommittee of the council or individuals. Want to look at more of the graph plans we have, we'd be happy to share other views. Possible room outlines, possible floor plan designs at a future meeting or one-on-one or however people want to see that. Um, but next slide. Before we get back to the future, a little more history. Many of you will remember that for most of the library's existence, it had been located in space shared with the Orno Middle and High School Library. The foundation spent many years raising both the support and the funds that helped build the freestanding library we have now. At the time, based on needs and library standards for communities similar to Orno. It was determined that the community would best be served by a twelve thousand square foot facility. Unfortunately, due to funding issues, the library design was cut to six thousand square feet, so roughly in half. That necessitated the elimination of some really key spaces that would support the community, the patrons and the staff of the library. When the library opened in two thousand nine, along with, you know, lots of excited comments about the beautiful facility. The library now had, there were observations, the library was already bursting at the seams. So next slide. The next major campaign of the foundation was to develop the Orno Village Green for that project. The foundation raised the necessary funds. Worked on the designs donated, as Sophie mentioned, donated both to the town, which then managed the bids and the construction. And also funded some features that hadn't been included in the original plan. Next slide. In two thousand nineteen, the foundation hosted a tenth birthday party. It kind of shocked us all that the library had been open for ten years. But so we hosted a tenth birthday party for the library. We had a great turnout. The question we heard the most during the event was some version though of when are you going to expand the library? So over the last eighteen to twenty-four months, the foundation has been working toward answering that question. We've been working with architects from Haley Ward. And we visited main libraries that had recently expanded existing facilities. To get ideas about what was possible, what works, what doesn't work and what might be right for our community. Next slide, we also put out a public survey both online and in print. It was advertised in the. The Observer, it was handed out in Deerville Pines, it was available at the store and results of that survey. Helps confirm that there was a need for larger library facility. Next slide. So I working primarily virtually during the pandemic years. We launched a quiet seed fund campaign to help raise funds to help cover expenses related to planning capital campaign. Developing plans for an expanded library and for early campaign expenses, including the preliminary. Preliminary design work. With a small team of solicitors, we raised over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from generous donors. Who hadn't seen the design, but really felt that they were strongly supporting of that of the need for an expansion. Some of the solicitors and some of the donors are also here tonight, so. Thank you. Next slide, yeah, space issues. Looking specifically at issues that have arisen over the last decade. Our work has uncovered some major space issues that affect the library's ability to meet the needs of the town. Very broadly, these issues fall into a few categories. Our current group meeting area is small, has a capacity of only thirty-five, twenty-five when seated and is. Often crowded, it's overbooked, it's quite utilitarian. But it's used very heavily after school. It's hosted some very successful but also crowded presentations and activities. I went to a travel Tuesday right before. Things changed in two thousand twenty and it was standing room only and it was great to have the. The presentation, but it was very crowded and really showed the limitations of that space. Our children's area is warm and inviting, but the current space arrangement means the storytime is right in the middle of the book stacks and the. Public and the picture book area. And that blocks other users from that area during those events. It also can be distracting to the participating children who want to grab books off the shelf instead of, you know, being. Present for the for the storytime. It also means that noise from the children's activities, the singing, the music. Can be disruptive in other parts of the library. If you visit the library in the afternoon, after school or on a half day, early release day particularly. One very visible area of need is for dedicated teen space. We have no specific space for our young adults to call their own when they come to the library. That also highlights that with our wide open floor pan, the wide open floor plan of our current library. We don't have a dedicated quiet area for patrons who are looking for that sort of environment. One of the other areas that was cut probably the most when the original library design was reduced from twelve thousand to square, six thousand square feet. Was staff space. Highlights demonstrating that lack of functional space include that not long ago, we had a nursing mother on staff. But the library had no private staff area outside of the director's office for her to use as a lactation station. More recently, pandemic-related changes in the way libraries across the state meet and do their work. Has meant more Zoom meetings for our library staff with no or with few enclosed offices that can be very difficult and distracting in the open office space. Both to hear what's going on in the Zoom meeting, but also to be able to talk and actively participate in those meetings. And finally, our library is lacking in some staff space from stack space for materials. Which means an accelerated weeding schedule and a smaller collection than would be ideal. Based on what our needs are and suggested standards for communities of our size. So next, thanks. Slide, thank you. So we have developed a number of expansion goals that meet those needs. In order to meet these needs, in conversation with the community, with Laurie and her staff and with potential donors, we've come up with these goals. These include a spacious community room that has AV equipment for presentations. Technology to support group projects and is able to be subdivided into different spaces for concurrent use. And also able to be secured for after hour use without providing access to the rest of to the rest of the library. We also envision a welcoming entryway that can function as a community living room and can better support displays. And impromptu meetings and conversations of the community. And we want to include and expand on our flexible activity space that can be used for events as well as children's activities. That might be messy or loud. Next, but next slide. The draft designs also expand our children's area by adding a dedicated story area. An activity area as well as additional redesign space for the children's collection. Addressing the needs of our users, we also include a dedicated teen area that's both set aside from the children's area. But also easily accessible by the teens and also easily monitored by staff. And the concept drawings call for a quiet reading area that might also be able to double as a space that could be used for small book club meetings and the like. Next slide. The designs that are in progress also help meet the needs of supporting our staff with expanded office space, a dedicated break area. And more room to do back of the house work that keeps the library running smoothly and more efficiently gets materials into the hands of the community. Finally, the designs would include additional shelving for books and flexible display areas for our collections. Next slide. So where are we now? Our work with the architects has created draft designs that reuse and renovate our existing space and add an additional seven thousand four hundred square feet. Once complete, we plan to bring the designs to town council as we've already shared for approval so that we can move toward a plan that will allow us to build the library expansion. Here's the kicker, based on very rough estimates, it does look like the full project would cost somewhere in the vicinity of five point two to six and a half million dollars. Also, based on very rough estimates, we feel the foundation could raise somewhere around one to one and a half million dollars through private fundraising. So the next big step would be to identify the proper mix of funding and what options there might be to bring this. Project to fruition. And so with that, I want to once again thank the town councilors for having us here. The supporters that have come out to hear tonight's presentation. As well as thanks to Sophie, Rob, Bill, the town staff periodically, we periodically call on for questions. And finally, I'd also like to thank Laurie and the rest of the library staff. Who make the library so much more than a building just full of books. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. If I can.
So why don't we see if there's any questions from council and then if there's questions or comments from the community, we'll hopefully.
Well, I'm Tom Perry and very thorough in. Excellent presentation. Thanks very much for that and thanks to the foundation for the work they have done so far. I was involved in soliciting funds for the initial library construction and served on the foundation for a period of time and. I can appreciate the hard work that goes into making something like this happen. Having said that, I would be interested in hearing a little more about your last comment, proper mix of funds.
Yeah, well, so I think, um. Some of that is back on you all as well. Um, you know, I think. Speaking as a resident of the town as well as a member of the foundation. The ability to privately fundraise to build an expansion of that, I just don't think in a community such as ours would happen. As a foundation, we. Were hoping that numbers might come in smaller and they might, you know, we are going and I shared. I think some really large numbers in part based on. The timing that those numbers were coming out. We all know that projects and we've seen the Old Town Stillwater Bridge. And where estimates came out versus the bids. So we don't want to sugarcoat and say, oh, it'll be a two million dollar project. It'll be fine and then come back and not be able to do the work. As a foundation, we also. Really feel that the community needs these spaces and. To try to peel off and do just a small portion means it would be coming back. Every couple of years to to talk to the community and we'd rather spend a bit more time to come up with the right mix. Other communities come up with different mixes and those. Can be around private fund, private fundraising obviously plays a part. Grants play a part, reaching out to businesses and other opportunities in the community can play a part. In my day job, I work with libraries across the state. And I've seen all different ways of raising these funds. They. I often come with a lot of town funds. There are earmarks that have just started back up. For congressional earmarks, we have no idea if those are going to continue. That might be something that we could investigate. Lots of different. Lots of different things to investigate. I don't think the library has ever been on the. Long range capital planning in terms of major projects. Beyond the the management of the existing facility. So that would be something that we think would be of interest to to look at as well. Thoughts, Sophie or Laurie or?
Could you reiterate what the estimate was for the amount that the foundation felt it could reasonably fundraise?
Yeah, and again, really early days, we had talked on a, you know, a capacity assessment for that, but we were looking, we were thinking that one to one and a half million. Might be something that the. Community could support private fundraising.
What do you see as a timeline?
So I think that a capital campaign of that size would easily be, you know, three or more years. I'm going to look at, we we have hired a fundraising consultant. Who works with us, Alicia, Alicia Nichols, who's in the audience here today. That has helped us with the Village Green campaign prior to this. Three to five years.
Three to five years is is realistic.
Yeah.
So a million a year.
Yeah. But and and that's, you know, and that's one reason why we wanted to talk to you all now is not wait until, oh, next year, we want to do it next year. You know, we we know that this is a time, a lengthy time commitment before we would be able to come to that.
When we're thinking about this expansion project. Is there, would the library, well expanded, continue to function at the same staff capacity or would there be some? Difference in staffing built into this?
It's a good question. Um, and.
Yeah, that that's actually a neat question because the library foundation deals with the brick and mortar. Laurie and her team have done, I think, a young person's job in. Creating and giving input into a design that would minimize the amount of staffing. However. When we look at library staffing right now. If you start adding separate rooms, which would then also kind of be get more programming. You're probably going to be looking at a minimum of making our part-time positions full-time, which would add. Well, thirty-two hours.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, Laurie helped us think about this, but we have sightlines and ability to close spaces off. Kind of forefront in our minds to help with that, but.
And I think at this point. With my peripheral. Participation. You know, I I think what's important. For council to be thinking about, and I don't think this is about giving an answer today. But I think it's about putting it on your radar screen along with some other pretty big. Facilities type questions. Um. Is, is the town prepared to step in and bridge the gap? Because I do think it's unrealistic to expect a small volunteer group. To go out and privately raise six million dollars. That that just doesn't. That doesn't make sense. And if it's important to our community, it's important to our community, you know, I'm pitching. So I think part of this is to not take a long time because the group has got momentum and. We want them to be able to go out and continue this work. And I don't think. Guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you want to go out and continue to fundraise knowing that there's a deficit without commitment from the town. And I think at the end of the day, we probably, if the council was going to commit to that, I think council would want to. I would want to think the foundation would want a memorandum of some sort between the council and the town. So that they could take that to do.
I. I may, I I appreciate what you said, Sophie, in terms of putting it on our radar. I may miss some of these things, but I know we currently have an engineering study on three town-owned properties going on. To decide what we're going to do with those. We have a study going on, a different study going on in our public safety building. Which is need of some renovation and expansion. We have a main street. Road project in the background. So, you know, I think putting it on our radar and seeing how that all. Fits together or what parts of it's fit together is important. I I also wonder, you know, having been involved in the original project. Obviously, the bids for that project came in significantly higher than we felt. We could raise or expect the town to help us with. It ended up being almost a fifty fifty project. Pound doing fifty percent fundraiser, fifty percent. I I wonder if the foundation is prepared at some point. To say if the project goes forward and everything seems to be going in the right direction, all of a sudden we get this bid that's. Way beyond our capacity. Are we prepared to look at some modification of our plan?
I I think any plan has to, yeah, has to be entered into with the idea that modifications are of some sort are going to be inevitable. I hope, and one of the reasons why. Although, you know, we weren't thrilled when we saw a large number, when we talked with the architects who helped to develop that number. They were really. They were really doing what I thought was a good job of trying not. You know, like I said, not to sugarcoat the numbers. Who knows in five years what's going to happen here. If we went out for to bid two years ago, things would be very different than going out to bid today. But yeah, I think that that is always, you know, always something that has to be entertained. I think I'll throw that to Laurie too, and Laurie, if you have anything that they.
No, thanks.
I say that doesn't judge with what the library's needs are, please. You know, and that is one thing, you know, as one of the support organizations for the library. We really want to take our role as being support organizations. And so we have talked a lot with the the staff to help identify the needs along with talking with.
I have another question if no one else does. I'm curious about the footprints of the proposed building and how that. Fits spatially with the Orno Village Green and the parking lot that's there. Wider.
Great question, great question. Um. One of the things when the initial building was built, and this may be, you know, people who've been around a long time. You know, kind of have, has been the idea that we can build on the four corners back and forward. Well, clearly with the village green there, we can't use the back two corners, you know, extensively because. One of the things that that I would say as a foundation member we're committed to is not disrupting the village green. You know, that is an amazing space that the community brought and brought together and built. And so we're. We wouldn't do that. One of the things that we did discover, and I think the town council was all involved in this. I don't know if it was this. This iteration of the town council or the the one right before it was that the zoning for the library. Was residential or medium residential and the setbacks meant that we couldn't. Build extensively in front of the building. That was changed. It went to right to the library property line. That was changed now to be in the commercial district. Which does allow us to build up much closer to the sidewalks, you know, obviously with. Facilities and cell removal concerns in there. So the footprint that we're looking at. With the the design that was on that second or third slide. Comes out quite a bit towards the sidewalk. Expands a little bit towards the parking lot. And includes a little bit of an extension on the back corner over that stairwell area. Maybe, and I have to remember the different versions, there might be a little bit of a protrusion into the patio area in the village green. But nothing that goes into anywhere near the amphitheater. Um. Some of the things, yeah, and we're not getting into the details of the plans, but you know, some of the things that that. I'm really excited about are some space for the the children off to the side of the children's. Facility, some teen space that might get there and that reading area kind of in the back corner. The community room, I think, could also be really just amazing. And if you remember that slide, there was a big kind of angular set of windows and. That was kind of the community area and coming out towards the toward the road there. Like would be very inviting.
I think one of the things they've done in the design that I'm excited about is really taking that moniker as the anchor for that side of the village commercial. And creating the peaks and the natural kind of outside that we would look for as kind of a. Segway into the medium density residential zone, but giving it some height so that it looks like. An inviting public space.
I just want to echo what Tom said and say thank you for all the work you guys are doing and have done and continue to do and very impressive that you've raised a hundred and thirty-seven, one thirty-one donors. So. That's a that's a nice, uh. Nice, nice work on your part, on the team's part. I maybe this is, I think it was more of a question, I guess, for Sophie. You said they would add probably thirty-two hours. Are you, I assume you mean. That that doesn't mean we'll get thirty-two more hours of the library being open. We need thirty-two more hours to maintain existing.
With more space and the programming that that space would really call for.
I'm curious, maybe this is Laurie or you question as far as economies of scale. Would would we gain and not to detract from, this is obviously a very effort, it's an important effort, but. Would we gain anything operationally if we were open more? Would would it spread things out more?
would we gain anything operationally if we were open more? Would would it spread things out more so that there's more quiet time on, say, Sundays, for example?
So, so.
Kids don't show up at two thirty.
So I'm going to take this and Laurie can correct me if I'm wrong because I'm not a library director. But based on what I've seen, based on what I've read, the Ornoville Library operates with a shoestring of staff. And we are fortunate right now to have a library director who spends an awful lot of time filling in when necessary. And so I think we're kind of used to this very stretched operations. You start adding space, people needs to that, and you're either going to need to, I mean, you're going to have to have staff to meet those needs. I mean, that's just a reality.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we get, if if we building aside, if it's a different conversation, but if we had more additional staff, open more hours, does that, that would seem that that would alleviate some of the constraints that were.
Well, I think it all, it all depends because I think if you were open on Sunday, not our time finding staff, we'd staff it. Perfectly.
Continue to have someone problem.
Yeah.
Long going to use since we couldn't necessarily say, okay, Sunday's the quiet time.
They wouldn't get that onslaught probably at two fifteen or thirty.
They find us at all.
Having a property that backs up, they finds, sometimes they find the village green.
I guess the question for you of the council is, is this something? Just to clarify, so there there's about a four million dollar delta that we're probably talking about. And would that, would referendum ever come into play on something like this?
So town council doesn't have to send anything to referendum. It can choose to send anything to referendum. And if people, and if a group large enough, so I think based on our last gubernatorial election, I think it would be around four hundred and four hundred people signed petitions. They can, they can send anything to referendum. So ultimately, if we, if council was going to make a a commitment to support this, I think council's looking at utilizing staff time to file grants and for earmarks. I think earmarks get a little bit more difficult simply because of some things that are unique to Orno that small towns might not have, like whole world library. They meet two completely different needs, but from congressional checklist, I think that might be a little difficult. But so we can try the public facing grants, we can try public facilities, USDA public facility grant. They're difficult to get. But realistically, I think you're looking at having to borrow for some of that money. We just don't have four million dollars sitting. And even with five years, I don't see that you could raise that kind of money. So I think what you'd be making is a commitment to try to watch the markets and ultimately end up floating the bond, I think.
I I spent time in another main community, Greenville, and they have just started. They're well on their way of building a new hospital there. And they agonize over where all the money was going to come from Northern Light System, Northern Light Facility. And somebody came out of a woodwork and donated four million dollars. Somebody doesn't live in the community but had a connection to the community. Maybe we'll be really lucky.
Are any of those nineteen century railroad there? So I guess what's our process here to to, Jeff? Would it be helpful for us to kind of all weigh in on our level of enthusiasm? So like.
Well, I I think we could do that. We don't have to commit or make a decision. This is really a listening session. And as Sophie said, I think we we go from here, keeping in mind the other capital projects that we have on the agenda. I will say that historically, council has had liaison to the to the group, and I currently sit on the board. I I haven't been there all that long, so I'm not as steeped in the planning as as the veteran members are, but I think we can continue to have that conversation. I would say if if somebody is super enthused about it or really challenged by this, it's probably better to have those conversations earlier than later. But could you be both? You can, you can be super enthusiastic about the project and really scared about the bill, so. Yeah, I will say that every meeting that I've attended has been information rich, like this group had done their homework, they've done site visits, and I think it was a gut punch to everybody when some of these numbers came back. So I I think they're going to keep talking to the architects who, you know, were finding planning the numbers, so.
Well, I'm an enthusiastic supporter, so I'd like to see it move forward.
Enthusiasm, hi.
Hi.
Libraries and central spaces and particularly provide an opportunity for a more level playing field in our society is there more? We need to build them and make them as accessible as possible.
Before we close up the discussion, I'd like to, you know, if there's anybody from the community that has information to offer that we haven't heard, we usually don't get this much of a crowd, so.
I don't know how to behave.
But hey, you're certainly welcome to speak tonight. You're not obligated to speak tonight. You're welcome to to message us, drop us information anyway that you choose. Communicate through Sophie, communicate through the foundation or or contact any of them.
Jeff, can I just add one more suggestion? I think, you know, we talked about the plans we're getting to evaluate this as part of it. I think one of the important pieces is to take stock of the space that this particular project would plan to add to our resource and think about that as we evaluate other spaces. So not just a what are the needs here and how are these priorities aligned, but also what are the needs? And would this provide a cost effective over the long-term solution to some of those areas?
Great point. Okay, James, thank you very much.
Excellent presentation. I really appreciate it.
Again, happy to answer questions outside of.
Certainly here, thank you for that library.
Well, folks are welcome. Round soon this meeting, but. I don't want to start so let me let files out.
Well, while there's an active crowd still here, I think it makes it easier for the town council to be like, yeah, we're a hundred percent in on the library. You all get as many people as possible totally jokes about it. Like, and and there is like an awareness of the fact that maybe people's taxes will go up a little bit, but if we're all on board with that and you all love the library.
I just want to say, it's going to get lonelier for you in the next part of the meeting, but we really appreciate. Megan, I have a family member.
All right, so. Without further ado, let's start the conflict of women's issues committee. That's popular, but just making work. I may propose contact zone for seventy-four weeks.
So we have a town planner who's a bit left in the weather joining us. And I think we have.
Well, I didn't even notice you in the crowd back.
And I'm like, really?
Well, we're interested in what you have.
Well, I'm excited about that. I think a lot of people will be, but as preliminary as we are, so.
So shall it be you or under the weather type translator? He's going to try, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Hi, everyone. I can start out. Sorry if I start coughing in between talking. So, yeah, I, everyone should have received a a draft of the contract zone agreement that we put together. This was based off of our the previous conversation we had with council where we had sort of just, you know, mentioned the idea of this. And, you know, if you remember talking about it, then the buyer property is one of those properties on our zoning map that sort of identified right there upfront that it's, you know, a a good option for a contractor conditional zone. And the reason for that is, you know, as we've talked about with, you know, other ones like it around town is because there's some use or structure there that doesn't really fit in with the scale of its existing zoning district. So that, you know, large, you know, ten to fifteen thousand square foot footprint building, you know, doesn't really fit in with the uses that the medium density residential district allow. You know, there's not really a good way to redevelop that in that MDR zoning designation. So the the goal of the contract would be to you know, make a a set of conditions and environment that would help to make the the applicant's project possible. And then you also put in some standards in place to sort of, you know, blend in the, you know, to the surrounding MDR district. So I mean, you're only about one lot away here from the the existing downtown village commercial. But you are, you know, this block of Mill Street, it does turn into to MDR. So the first, you know, page, just to quickly kind of highlight some things in the the draft. The first page is really just introducing the property and where it calls to change the zone from the MDR to the village commercial district designation. And the reason we we'd want to use the village commercial is highlighted on, you know, as you get into the bottom of the first page and onto page two, when it talks about permitted uses. So the main use here that the applicant would be looking for is multifamily. You know, with the lot size per dwelling unit to actually fully utilize the the building. The village commercial is really the only district we have that brings into play a a density that would make, that would make it feasible here to really develop the the existing building. So those permitted uses would allow, obviously, the multifamily. Any use that would be normally allowed in the in the MDR, since that was the district it's coming from anyway. To commercial units, the applicant had acknowledged in their pre-application submission possibly using that front storefront area on Mill Street for some small scale commercial type uses like a, you know, retail or restaurant or office space or, you know, something like that. You know, cafe type things, you you know, that sort of scale. But I think the goal there in keeping it to specifically two units or, you know, later on, we talk about a a potential maximum floor area for the commercial space. The goal with those sorts of standards was to, you know, acknowledge that the the primary job of this redevelopment project was to bring in a wider variety of housing opportunities to the community. And that, you know, whether, you know, whatever the intent was of, you know, this current project, preventing some future project from coming in and just converting the whole building to commercial space and, you know, not having any residential. And then finally, all principal uses operated from the existing principal structure. And, you know, that gets spoken to a bit more in the dimensional requirements as well, where it talks about not expanding the the principal structure beyond some, you know, small things like decks or emergency access, things like that. The goal there there again was to acknowledge the, you know, the desire by the applicant to reutilize the existing building and have those, you know, whatever the new land uses were, the multifamily, the commercial spaces take place in that existing structure on the lot so that there weren't, you know, later on proposals for new construction down by the river, you know, closer on that side of the lot for for new sorts of activities. As, you know, you go on, again, it's, you know, goes through the dimensional requirements. I think a couple important things to note here would be that, you know, we put in a a max number of dwelling units. That was, one, it's related to what the minimum lot size per dwelling unit is in the village commercial. Based on our ordinance, you you couldn't get much more than thirty units on that size lot to begin with. So that's really where that number comes from. And then we put in a maximum number of bedrooms per dwelling unit. You know, in talking with Zach, you know, putting things together, it seemed like, you know, his idea was largely one, two bedrooms, maybe with some three bedrooms. And I think from the town's perspective, I I that's those sorts of rental properties are a lot of times what we're missing in town and and don't have. So protecting that, not just now, but again, going forward, if there was ever a future owner from turning into, you know, the four or five bedroom type units where it starts to become less feasible for individuals and smaller families to rent that scale of a a dwelling unit or apartment. As we move on, it sorts of goes, starts to go into some of the off-street parking requirements and performance standards. I believe you were passed out some PDFs there at the meeting that sort of show the the back existing gravel parking area could probably be turned into something like, you know, fifty parking spaces. I mean, I think it's important to note that those aren't actual site plans that work would still have to be done there to, you know, actually figure a layout and make sure everything meets the ordinance and all that sort of thing. But with our proposed off-street parking change that we've been talking about, you know, combined with the level of, you know, space that's in that back area on that existing parking area, it seems like that putting in a maximum of sixty spaces would, you know, provide enough parking for what the the applicant wanted to do. And you know, not really create an additional impact, you know, pushing further down closer to the river or things like that. And then for, sorry, for performance standards, you know, it's in there to just follow the the general existing ordinance standards for the part of the lot that's in the shoreline area. So the part of the lot that is in shoreline zone here is in the general development shoreline, so that is a little more forgiving when it comes to development than some other shoreline zone areas. That's really, it was a designation given to properties that were already largely developed like this one. So, you know, DEP has less restrictions in place for, you know, these sorts of properties than for other shoreline zone properties that might be limited residential or limited commercial, things like that. Signage similar to the the Tyler contract, you know, keeping in mind that it's, you know, still surrounded by, you know, some more single-family residential uses, not having those internally lit brighter signs, but keeping it to any signage being externally lit. The site lighting, if there is any in the parking area or the front of the building, putting more restrictive foot handle limitations so that there aren't as many, you know, lighting and glare issues bleeding over the property lines and things like that. And then maintaining a a vegetated buffer around that back parking area as that back parking area would. But up to the back of a number of. MDR lots. And I think that was one of the things that we heard in the Tyler process was that concern over people coming in and out of parking areas and the potential for, for lighting to kind of from the cars coming into their lots. So that pretty much sums up, you know, what we came up with. You know, I'm happy to, you know, go over any points made in the contract or anything that counselors, you know, think should be touched on that aren't. I can also pull up the, the documents that you have on screen if it's easier that way. But in, in general, I think we thought that this kind of accurately allowed for what the redevelopment was proposing without allowing for too much expansion beyond the, the proposal.
Kyle. Questions?
Well, I had this whole Steve's there. There's way people here earlier today. I thought they were all here.
If there's something in particular you'd like to add before we start?
No, not, no, no.
Question?
No.
Or we could do that.
No. Since we already met before and I got to explain kind of the overall scope and image. But I would like to say that this packet that I gave out, this is like, just clearly an depiction of kind of the idea that we have. You know, it's like, we're keeping this footage like Paul mentioned several times. We're not trying to add on, knock down buildings, build on new buildings. We're trying to use the existing structure. And I know in this depiction, it looks like there are a lot of units in there. I'm thinking it's more like 24, 26 units, you know, depending on kind of how the commercial elements works out with, you know, if anybody's interested and moving a little bit out of the village center and into that space. But, you know, we would kind of tailor that to what we thought was the right opportunity right from town for that space. Where of course, like Paul said, we're trying to limit to a couple of units, not a whole bunch of commercial units. Because we just felt like that probably isn't my use for that space and that residential, that more essential community. But I did want to provide a packet that kind of showed capital effort and thought into how we're going to do all these things. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had something to reference and look at as we had the contract. You know, zone change, not necessarily a site plan design and actual approval on, you know, the end, end use of the building. So.
And this has to be on the planning board. So the tentative, the tentative schedule, depending on what you all do tonight. If you are generally in agreement and we're ready for staff to just fine tune this, we would ask you to refer this to the, to the planning board, at which time Kyle and Zach would finalize exact contract that they would be looking for within that would be substantially similar to what you're looking at today. We would go to planning board, planning board will hold its public hearing, so notify Butters and the world. Hold its public hearing, give its recommendations. Those recommendations come back to the town council. If there are issues, council may choose to meet with Zach and talk about what those issues might be. And if there are no issues, oftentimes it gets simply forwarded to town council with thumbs up. If everything looks good at planning board and there isn't any substantial change to the contract, oftentimes staff will put on your next council agenda going ahead and scheduling the public hearing. It requires a scheduling notice as well as to be posted twice before you can have your public hearing. That public hearing, depending on what you hear, it either will go simply back on a town council agenda if there are no comments from the public for approval. If there are, it comes back to committee. We try to do that in a way that doesn't push it up another one. And kind of one from there.
Okay, so what about notifying the, the people around who decided, is that a requirement?
Yeah, so the, the ordinance has one requirement, which is a minimum requirement. We often almost double that. I think we normally do 500 or 500, we do 1,000 feet to make sure that people who are impacted will receive notice. Where this is on the shores of the Penobscot River and it's a zone change. We also would pursuant to our land acknowledgement, we would send notice to the Penobscot.
Just to clarify, this is just the contract zone.
Right.
So when, when the project came back, it would have to go through the planning board process again, which a Butters would then again be Tyler's way concurrently. So all that happened at the same time, but this is strictly the contract zone first.
Yeah, any multifamily use requires site plan review. I mean, simultaneously with subdivision review. So that, that all has to go to the planning board regardless of the, the contract.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm generally in support of this contract zone language. I did a nice job with it. I am interested in seeing under dimensional requirements that section three and section seven flashed out where you say talking about building footprint and there might be some minor additions to the building footprint. I think you, you're probably going to add some language there.
Spot on. I was like, I think we should address those as well. This, I think, based on the initial read of it, I didn't know what the bigger plan was. So, you know, as we went through the site plan review or, or I think those could get identified for sure with this.
Yes, and I think those, those are really the key areas, particularly three and seven, because those are the two components right now that are very vague and that would impact the neighbors most. So I think that fleshing goes out. Like, for example, I mean, if you say small additions like a deck, I'm sure that a budding neighbors are going to want to know, like, is this like, are there going to be little balconies on these apartments? Are there going to be people that can look into my bathroom? Like, you know, I mean, like standard, and when it talks about, you know, restaurant space or retail space in the front, like that's something the neighborhood's going to be very interested in, in more specifics about. So those are kind of, yeah, the two that need some fleshing out.
I, I am, I am recalling the concerns that another property owner had not too far from where your project is that who had a rooftop deck at one point. And there were a lot of neighborhood concerns about the rooftop deck and the noise that came from it. Then in a new owner modified that and changed it and eliminated and took care of it.
So the good news is Kyle was part of that solution. So I'm sure he is well aware of kind of what the concern is.
Zach, there's no conceivable way, I assume, to do anything about, to get a sense for traffic. Right? I think that's what I read in there. Kind of hard telling. We don't know.
Well, you know, I, I mean, definitely not a traffic engineering expert or anything. So I don't want to, you know, presume to be one. We just got approval in Alltown for a 24 unit, which is similar in size, I guess, and similar of like peak traffic trips. I mean, it's a, it's more based on like the peak number of trips per, like the peak hours of traffic happening. And the number based on 24 units, so this is somewhere between 24 and 30, was so low on the number of trips that were going to happen that we were like, it was like 100 per an hour per the time. It was so low based on that number that we weren't triggered an actual traffic report study on that. Because normally in those situations, I think it's like not residential, it's like commercial traffic. So if we did have a big nightclub or something like that, that's not our plan. Like in a situation like that, those, those type of, those type of, I mean, we were thinking more like commercially, you know, you know, some amenity space to the tenants that currently live there. You know, like, I wouldn't say like a bookstore, but you know, something like, something that would be amenable to people that are there as we talk to people would be of what they really want and need in that area. Not just like some business we have or anything else we walk through in there. We're trying to figure out what seems makes sense for the space, you know? Like, you know, walkable community is like a small little wine bar, you know what I mean? Is it like a little something that Oregon doesn't have or needs, you know, something to go in that space? It's not like, you know, a, you know, way outside the norm, but maybe extending the downtown walking for me, just a little bit more into a little bit outside of the, the common area. Probably with a, a very small traffic. So just on some of my previous ones that we have gotten done, we didn't find it was a huge traffic problem. Now, if the engineers are like, this obviously triggers traffic study or the planning board is like, this obviously triggers the traffic. So let's do it. Let's make sure that that gets done and it's done appropriately and then whatever needs to be adjusted or changed, we can make sure that happens.
Full of swagger. I'm going to bother, obviously, I think you know that. But so I'm going to hear it from my neighbors, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I've just tried to look down like number of units down in that area. It seems like there's about seven properties maybe. So I've never ever waited to get out of my car, but it was 70 properties in that area. So I, I mean, for best case scenario, I think I walk to work and it'd be nice to see people funneling out there, walking up to get the bus and all that. But we, we will never know how that's going to go. But that's, my sense was kind of the same, but I, I, I did have to ask because I think that's going to be a natural concern for most of people.
So I can, I can sort of echo what Zach was saying that a multi-level like apartment building use of this scale is not going to trip any DOT permitting or or extra traffic analysis through our planning board review. So the DOT traffic permit kicks in at 100 peak hour trips. Did this project wouldn't reach that amount. So yeah, but a, as Zach mentioned, you know, through the planning board process, traffic is a, you know, one of the approval criteria looked at. So but I, I don't think that residential uses generate as much peak traffic as people sometimes think.
So.
And one clarifying question. This is going to be an apartment complex that you're going to rent. Could it ever be condos that, that would be sold off? This question for Zach. Kyle, sorry. And is that, that's probably nothing that we have any bearing on or, but it could be condos or, but, but the plan is for there to be a rental. All rented. Is that correct?
The impact as far as the number of bodies in a, in a certain number of bedrooms at a certain size isn't going to change if it's a condo or whatever. The impact as far as behavior, which we can't, we can't legislate through the land use process. May, is that a fair statement?
I mean, maybe I'm an oversharer, but like, you know, I'm kind of like, I'm kind of like, well, no, our model has that. We have, you know, rental, we have rental units and that's kind of what we're doing. Now, I'm not sure, I'm sure there's lots of business people that would tell me, hey, you know, that might be better for you to condo that out or doing that. But that's not really our intention, what we're planning on doing. You know what I mean? I mean, we would have our own property manager company, probably manage what's going on with the space. And we would have our level of control now. I think the idea here is, well, who, what's been happening 30 years when I'm not doing this anymore, I would decide to sell the building, right? What, what is, what's, what the, the, the contract zone change is going to dictate what's really allowed to happen there? Not me as an individual owner who did the development of what's going on. So I feel like, you know, I want to provide this stuff so I can give you an example of what my real plan is. But you know, this is all, this all fits well within what Kyle and Mitch and I all talked about for putting together, you know, for, for the contract zone change for the parcel.
And, and I think that's a really important thing for council to pick up on here, that your contract zone is simply changing the zone. The planning board would permit the use, the planning board would look at whether or not there's a traffic impact. And just because even if it did, for some miraculous reason, trip that this has a, a traffic impact, the next step is how does it get mitigated? Not, that means it's not a good project. And I think it's really important for we, us to remember council's lane is the zoning lane, not the site plan. Just as if you choose to change the zone, the planning board is only doing the site plan for that zone, not anything else.
And that's why I was kind of thought the question, maybe it was more for Kyle about that. Could it, so it could turn into condos and, and that could not be written into a contract zone. I, I think that would be, we would want to say, no, we don't want that anymore. That's, that's nothing to do with the contract zone. That was kind of my question. Beyond that, I'd just say, if I look at that building and, and think about the best, you, you know, it's nothing to look at now. It, it could use some work. If we're going to think about what's the best use, I, I don't, I can't see another better one than, than that personally. So that's my, my take.
I agree.
Other questions? Okay, so are we then comfortable referring this on?
Yes.
Yes. With, I am with.
With.
Two sections.
Noted, yeah.
Yeah, those two sections were definitely going to be added to or modified. That was not the final language here.
Everyone's got it highlighted. Highlighted for everyone. Excellent. Well, thank you very much, sir. I do like the first.
Figure it's something.
All right. Or sorry, B, revising the definition of owner occupancy related to the proposed land use ordinance. We can make this movie, those are, land use ordinance amendments to chapter 18, land use section 1831 definitions. 18 dash one or six scheduled uses and section 18 dash one 31 home occupations to amend zoning and performance standards for home stays. So I don't think we need a staff presentation on this. We have gone through this many times. For the benefit of the public and just to kind of get us on a page or a track right now. I just want to do a quick recap. So we have undergone a lengthy process with staff, with council and with the public over the last several, several years about the short-term rental registration ordinance. The ordinance was on the agenda for adoption this spring, but was sent back to committee for continued discussion for the benefit of our new counselors who had some questions. It then returned to the agenda for adoption this summer, at which time a new concern was raised over the definition of owner occupancy and was so sent back to committee so that staff could address that specific concern. And staff have now revised the definition of owner occupancy to remove this voter requirement. And so in this current draft, it brings the definition more in line or directly in line with the state of Maine's definition of permanent residence and the federal definition of what constitutes a property's owner. The town attorney has confirmed that we don't need to hold an additional public hearing as a result of this language change. And so that is the, the recap of where we've come and how we've arrived here. So my first question for the group is, are there any further concerns about the language around owner occupancy in this draft of the ordinance?
I guess I, I'd like to comment that that wasn't the only concern for last minute.
Okay, so it, it was not the only thing we discussed, but the reason that we sent it back to staff was so staff could amend that language. And that is the primary reason we're looking at it right now. So I first want to get a sense from everyone whether everyone's comfortable with that change in the language around owner occupancy or still has any comments or concerns about it.
I appreciate the change. It's a good one. I'm glad it was addressed.
Is that, that change in language also addresses my primary concern with us and I'm okay with moving forward now as it is now written.
Okay, yeah. The, so I'm hearing that everybody is comfortable with that language change. Am I also correct in assuming that we are ready to move it, as Sonia suggested, to the October meeting for a vote on adopting the ordinance?
I'm ready to move in.
I'm hearing that Leo probably still doesn't love this ordinance change and might vote against it. But we have arrived at probably a state of move forward ability on it is the sense that I'm getting. Does that sound accurate?
I, I'm always. In fact, when I make up words, I tell people I have a right to.
You're an English person.
So hearing consensus on that, I also am comfortable with that. We've heard Leo's objections. Okay, and we should also keep in mind that at this point, since incremental change is a very helpful way to address things like this, we also do have the ability to. Since incremental change is a very helpful way to address things like this, we also do have the ability to. Pass this ordinance potentially, and then in the future, we can make other incremental changes, should we need to do that, but we could see how it goes, so. Alright, so it sounds like we're, we can put that on the October agenda. Is that my whole committee? I can't believe that, I can't possibly be getting off that easy tonight. Is it?
That's it.
It is, it is, alright, well, thank you, Kyle, I hope you feel better.
Yeah.
You still get some rest?
Thanks, everyone.
And I will turn it over to the finance and operations.
Alright, and we have in finance and operations request to the town to sell a point one three acre lot. Described as lock map lot, zero zero six dash zero zero four dash zero five nine. Previously tax acquired to the abutting property owner at two five four seven Essex Street. There's quite a history to this particular small parcel, and um, we did get some good information on it, I don't know if you want to summarize that, Sophie?
I I do disclosure, and I did appreciate all of the information, I still don't fully understand what's happening.
So I am really, really looking forward to it.
Alright, so. Maps and lots can be acquired by. The same person, and for whatever reason, they can end up not in the same ownership. In this particular case, there was a large parcel with a house on it and a garage on it. That had a mortgage. By one company. Then there was another small parcel, point one three, which is not a legal lot. Um, that was acquired by the same owner, however, did not, was not subject to the same mortgage. So they remained in two separate lots. Um, so. The former land, the former property owner did not pay their taxes. They got notices that they were delinquent. Leans were put on both of those parcels separately because the parties and interests were separate on the small parcel. Um, when we came to the notice of automatic foreclosure. The um, mortgage holder stepped up and paid the delinquent tax on the large portion. Nobody stepped up and paid the tax on the one point three acres. Oh, point one three acres, there we go. Um, so the town tax acquired that, when the town reached back out to the former owner, asking if they wished to reacquire the property. At that point, they were going through a foreclosure process and had no interest in acquiring. We then reached out to the mortgage company when they owned it. And said, do you have any interest in acquiring this? They had no interest in acquiring. Um, we have an individual who has lived at this property for a while. Um, they were, I believe they were renting or leasing at some point when Vision, the mortgage company owned it. Um, they have, um, which would leave them not in a position to be able to acquire it as the owner. Um, and so, um, they have reached out to us.
They are now the owner.
They are now the owner, they have reached out to us, their driveway is on a portion of this point one three acres. There is in a butter on the other side of that point one three acres. When you look on the face of the earth, you see that they have maintained this property, it's not just point one three acres, so it's like true. Um, the uh, the requesters had planned to be here, they submitted documents to you. Um. They have COVID, um, issues and were were more than willing to come. We suggested, we suggested, so the promise I made to them was this, I would carry their water if it looked like. Um, this was something that council needed to hear from them on, we would take, I would ask the the committee table if, you know, we bring it back when we were able to be here. Um, so. Um, when a request like this is made, the first question is always, is there a. A larger priority or need for the town to maintain this parcel? Um, there is none in this circumstance that I could find staff. Priorities in general, and to be fair, we have. Asked other residents who have inadvertently crept onto town-owned property to. Pick up their sheds and move them, so we wouldn't want to, you know, be seen to be getting some sort of preferential treatment. Yeah, and I think the important piece here is that this has been more relatively. Recently, and I use the term relative because I think it happened the first year I was here, tax acquired. Um, whereas some of the times we've asked people to move their sheds, it's for a clear. It's on property that has been clearly and historically used by the town for public purpose. Um, so when, so the first hurdle is always, is there some greater public need that would say that the town should maintain ownership? Um, the answer here is no. Um, the next question is, uh, that the town council has to determine is on your own, do you wish? To dispose of the property, and if the answer is yes, you're you're fine. I'm telling you, staff is saying there's no need, you still have to decide that you want to sell it. If you decided you want to sell it, then you, that's the first barrier, the next hurdle that you go through is how. So in general, the philosophy here is. If the town is not going to have use of a parcel. It should go back out for all of the public to um, have a chance to own, that is your kind of default. So from there, you think, is there a particular interest that is best served by another one of the options that you have? When I look at the options that you have for sale by sealed bid. So you think about the entire public having access to own point one three acres, there is absolutely nothing. A member of the public could do with that parcel. In its current configuration, it can't be built on. Maybe you could have a generic parking space, I suppose, but even then, I don't know if you get the um, setbacks required on something that's small. Um, and the way it's configured, um, so then you kind of look to uh, sale to a butter, which is the. Would be kind of your next step, which is the ordinance lays it out, but essentially you give notice to both. Butters, you ask them for their dollar amount. So not what they're gonna do with it, but just a dollar amount. And um, whoever gives us the higher number. We transfer ownership with the caveat that it becomes part of their existing law. Um, the third option, which um, council also has in in its pocket, is a negotiated sale. And that is to say, there is some reason here why we have determined it's in the best interest of the town, or there's some fact. Here that would tell us it belongs with this other law, so you've done that. Um, Island Avenue was an example where there was uh, uh, somebody who had a. Retaining wall that was on the parcel that we actually acquired. Um, another tiny parcel, um, with a falling down house, and you determine. Council determined that it was in our best interest to simply negotiate a sale that involved taking down that. Um, dangerous film. Um, so it's kind of all over the the map, what you get to decide what's important from. The precedent setting side is that be very clear, if you're not using a sealed bid. Process that you are articulating why, so a butter, I could easily articulate that for you. If you're gonna go to a negotiated sale, we've got to kind of identify why you do that. So in terms of process, have I answered your question of how we got here?
Yes.
Can you understand why on a on a Friday night it was hard to be articulate?
Quick question.
Yeah.
When did this, when was it separated from the current? It was always two blocks, but it was part of something.
I am gonna say back in two thousand twelve, eleven, twelveish. Um.
And is it garage on?
So when I looked at it, I didn't see that in their garage is there, what I saw was their driveway. And if I review what they sent, it said driveway.
Okay, sorry.
It's in the note that they wrote to us, and so I was curious about that. Okay. Um, you know, I think there is a fact pattern here that would say it belonged to this parcel, been used as part of this parcel. It's can be returned, but um, as far as process. Your process is that you're not, you don't make a decision in committee. Um, you would refer this matter, um, if you determine that, so in committee, you could say, I don't have any, we don't have any desire to sell it, we're not interested, and it would die. Here. Um, you could say, we have interest, um, and we wanted to do it this way, particular way, and we would take that to public hearing. With your way, with an order, um, on the agenda, you would consider discuss amend based on what you hear at the public hearing. Or as we have done in the past, we can simply go to public hearing with, we want to dispose of it, give us your input, and then based on the input you receive. Make a determination of, yes, we want to dispose of it, and this is how.
So, so the first hurdle for me is simple, 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 I'm very much opposed to the town keeping land that we have no use for. Get it back out with the public, get it on the tax roll, and have somebody use it for worthwhile cause. Um, so that's an easier for me. The other hurdle is a little more complicated, but I I guess I would rely on the fact that it was. Owned by the same owner at one point in time. Um, the butter who was contacted us has significant reason to want it on his, wanted to have it on his. Uh, have it as his property, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, I uh, do not want to hold on to any property that we don't have a use for either, and in a vacuum. I would want to simply get the highest price for whatever piece of land we're selling, however. Um, it does seem that when there's a compelling reason to do a negotiated sale in this case, I, even if we were talking just to the butters. I don't want to incite a neighbor war. By having bids and, you know, now someone has to rip up their driveway, I mean, like, I don't think that's in the town's best interest either. Um, despite whatever the dollar differentials could be in a process like that, so. For me, I negotiated that with the, um, you know, interested party that has clearly been making use of and maintaining this property, it seems.
I'm a little confused by that, when you said negotiate and sell just with that individual, but you mentioned the butters, and there are two.
So there's a sale, so one of the others is the state of Maine, we wouldn't. One of the.
The other side of that looks to be Joshua and John.
So what you've got there is you've got the butter who's made the request, you've got the butter. There's one a butter on the other side, and behind them is the. State of the prison main, yeah.
Okay, oh, well, so, yeah, I'm I'm speaking of the the home, the person that owns the property, I mean, just.
Yeah, so there are two.
Yeah.
So one option would be to send them, if you went with sale to a butter, we'd send notices to both people at the same time. And um, we've done that before, sometimes neighbors get together and figure out between the two of them who they. Who, how they want to do it, um, sometimes it, I've not had a fitting word simply because there's only one opportunity sealed bid with. Both, both people. But and there's a possibility that the other butter is not interested.
Yeah.
At all.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Um, or. Um, the the idea of saying to these people here is, you know, what are you gonna give us for it? And negotiate kind of from there, which is always a. You know, we always, when we've disposed a property in the past on a negotiated sale, even a tiny, tiny parcel. We always get our, or have gotten our legal fees and, um, you know, any cost for title transfer. If there needs to be a survey, in this case, you don't need a survey because you're, there was a. A specific lot, you know, there's a deed for a whole lot, this is in fact. We just convey our interest.
Everyone, a property falls into our hands by a, you know, non-payment of taxes. Just being made whole, we're cooping any losses.
What's the assessed value on the property?
You would ask me that, of all the things I had prepared, that was not.
I'm sure Mitch has, right, as well. Said, I don't, but Leo's got it up, and he puts the eye on. But I, but it comes up as zero.
Oh, that's because it's tax acquired, just because it's old in town. Um, I would have to look, I, my guess is that it's a base.
That's.
A base acre, so Tom, I would say less than ten thousand dollars with assessed value.
Ten thousand dollars.
We're like point one, yeah.
Point one three acres.
The property next to it is point two eight and it's valued at, but.
Which what?
The property next to it is, it's point two eight and it's valued at thirty.
So I would say.
It's probably, if you go by that, it's roughly twelve.
Ten, I would say.
Just doing the math.
Yeah, I hear you.
But yeah, lots out there.
Um, and because what is the requirement to build on something?
So.
Point one three is.
That is not, no, that is not a buildable lot in any of our zones except for the, even the village commercial, it's too small.
Buildable, what's a buildable lot?
Yeah, because that, there is no public water or sewer out there, so. You're too, too small.
I I'm in favor, getting, I'm in favor of us not keeping it. I I'm, I'm a little nervous about just giving it to the first person at that, I can, I feel like both the butters should probably be involved. I mean, I I I, you know, I'm not trying to spoil something for the person.
I think, yeah, definitely the other butter needs to know that that property is up for sale, so they can make a decision, but they may not.
One of the, one of the options.
Yeah.
Is to put it on for public hearing without a specific disposal plan. As part of the order, um, both of the butters would receive notice of the public hearing. And see what you get.
See what you get for a comment. So the hearing will be to discuss what we want to do, what we think we should do with it, and we can take input, no?
No, so the public hearing is simply the question you're asking, the public council will take any comment from public, I find, but. The question, the legal question, the the hurdle that you're getting at from the public is. What does the public think about this disposal of this? So essentially what we're saying is, this is an asset that the whole community holds. Is there, this is their opportunity to get input as to whether or not it should be disposed of. Um, historically, because the order that usually follows on the agenda is. Also includes the method of disposal, because you're now giving me direction. Um, historically, council has taken public comment and had a discussion at public hearing about method as well, so.
And we have a public hearing as always, October.
Um. Yes.
I mean, I would be on favor of putting a specific order on the agenda and having public comment, because I cannot imagine, it would have to be something so compelling for the other butter to. For, I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, selling the property to the other butter would essentially mean this person having to invest. A lot of money and losing an aspect of their property and have, I can't imagine why council would want to do that. To me, there would be, I I, you know, I would love to hear public comment in case that other butter wants to say something to us, but I would like to also see an order.
Agenda first. I I I buy that, I I think, I mean, I I do, simply with Leo's comment, I mean, he's thinking fairness.
Yeah, right.
And and fairness is something we need to be concerned with. It seems like it would be silly for them to try to, the other butter to try to acquire this, but at the same time, I don't think that's probably too else to decide.
That's why we can come and hear from them if they choose to show up.
So the way this would work is. The public hearing happens, the order, however that. The public hearing happens, the order, however that sale, through sale to a butter, if that's where you go, go. Then that comes back to me, I send out the certified mailing saying, here's your opportunity by X date, tell me what you'll pay for it. We open those up, it comes back to town council for authority to dispose of the property. So that's when council knows what the two bids were. And we put an, an order for the high bid and you guys would. Would then give me the authority at that point, so at this point, you're not coming out with a dollar amount, you're not saying. Specifically, if it's a negotiated sale, then um, I would go back and negotiate and see. We would have to figure out what that online is.
I was like it first.
Yeah, so, so I, I go to auctions. And you often go to one auction and you think that uh, higher bid is going to get it, but often there's a minimum. And I wonder if that's something we would want to think about.
So in the past, when council set a minimum, it has been the minimum of everything that's owed to the town in past taxes. Plus legal fees, a- any other fees, recording fees, that kind of stuff. So the town's out of pocket, what we estimate is our out-of-pocket expense for the transaction, plus to be made. On those taxes which currently remain on the account, so at some point we stopped. Assessing taxes when we owned it, but whatever we acquired it for, which is peanuts.
I, I thought I read in there that the mortgage company had caught up this property on taxes too, but I just heard that, okay.
If they had caught this one up, we would have, yeah, we would have not proposed.
The assessed value is twenty six.
Much less than ten.
So I'm, I'm now a little bit confused with what's going to happen next.
Me too, I guess.
What I think is happening next, which I'm supposed to be. Taking what you're saying, not telling you.
Yeah.
Okay, but what I thought I heard is at the October town council meeting, we will hold a public hearing. That public hearing will give the public the opportunity to weigh in as to whether or not we should dispose of the property that we've been discussing. Um, and after that public hearing is over, there will be an order on the agenda. With um. Where you're making the finding that it is in the town's best interest to dispose of the property and indicating. The method by which you plan to dispose of the property, so what I need from you is, are you? Just, are you predisposed to say by sale to a butter and open to change it depending on what you hear at the public hearing? Or are you predisposed to say negotiated sale and willing to take comment that might have you change it to sale to a butter?
I'm willing to go to sale to a butter.
And sale for butter means.
Both of us, yeah, they both get a chance.
That.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, I mean, I, I wouldn't have said negotiated sale, but that's just me, I guess.
Yeah, I would, I would have said that also, but I, but I don't feel strongly about it.
I do feel strongly about it, I recognize I'm in the minority.
What is the, what is your reasoning for just to negotiate the highest sale?
No, that's the opposite reason. I think that this property should, I, I do not think that the town council should do something that is going to end up with a resident having to. Spend a lot of money to tear something out of their. What they have been using as their property. I think that's weird for the, for the council to be like, let's sell this property to your neighbor. And then the neighbor says, get your driveway off my property and possibly your garage, we're not sure. Um, that seems like a very strange thing for the council to do, and I can't imagine the circumstance in which I would want to do it. Um, putting it on the agenda as negotiated sale or the action, we still could change it, some, by some. Miracle, there was the compelling reason that I can't imagine was brought up at that public hearing, but. Um, my, my tendency would be to go with a negotiated sale to the first.
To the individual.
To the individual.
He's already using it, I mean, I, I tend to agree with Megan on this.
And not to be a butter, and not to be other property.
We could change our minds, depending on what we hear at the meeting, but.
I think if there is a, if that's a, because I don't know how much the driveway. Just from.
Right.
Conversation, you know, maybe it's fraction, maybe it's dirt, I, you know, I don't know, so. I, I don't think it's strange at all to, to, if I had land next to me, if someone else did too, I don't think it's strange at all. Because I've been thinking about this personally down here, so I'm like, well, if I was going to acquire this land, I think it would have to be operative, whoever's around it. In fairness, um, so I think, I don't, I think that is fair, that said, I don't, I, I think I could. I could consider that, if, I, I don't. Negotiated sale to me sounded more complex and like we were trying to get all the money for it, that's what I, that's kind of what I was thinking, you presented, so. Honestly, I think I, I personally, I could go either way, and, and that, if both the butters show up and there's something that doesn't seem right.
Like, they were sharing the garage, maybe stuff about the story that we don't fully understand, but.
Getting clarification on if that garage is on there, because that, that, that is, does make a difference too, I mean. The driveway and the garage is literally on there, I think that I could more, I'm just, I agree with what you're saying. But if it's a sliver of a driveway that maybe maybe isn't, um, then I think it should, both should have access, so. I'd be, I'd be open to negotiated sale with individual was the option, that it's something.
Yeah.
We have the option to change if, if we learn new information at that time.
Yeah, I mean, just, it, it might become and share, if the, the other butter has strong feelings or has some more to share. And on this action, let's hear it, but otherwise, I think a negotiated sale is the way to start it out.
So I, I, I agree. Um, but I would like to suggest two things, we got to make sure the other butter knows about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they, you know, they, all of the butters would get, I mean, I don't know that will. I don't.
Call Janet, tell her we're going to sell.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll send it to the state of Maine, because I don't think it's in our interest to sell to a tax exempt.
The, the, the other thing I think would be interesting to find out, in case we get into a. Difficult discussion is, what is actually, what are the, what do? Let me see if I can say it correctly. Is the driveway really on that parcel? Is the garage really on that parcel?
Yeah.
So what, and what makes it really tough for us is. Um, when we look at this parcel, number one, the lines. All over our JIS, it tells us not to use the lines as property lines because things. This is not dialed down even to the foot or necessarily three feet. So in order to get that, you're either going to ask people for surveys. Um, of existing conditions, or you're going to take town staff to go trumps and try to figure out their ins. So I don't know if there are ins out there.
I'm not missing the survey, no.
Yeah.
But I, but I would be interested in a knowledgeable staff member taking a look at it and giving us his or her best opinion.
Alright, so what I have is, we would look at this as negotiated sale with um, fifteen. Whatever that parcel port, twenty four fifty seven.
That was, you know, that's the big.
Twenty five forty seven, there we go, with the owner of twenty five forty seven. And if I look. So, yeah, so we would look there and um, send something, so I'll send staff out before we do anything. We've got a couple of weeks, right, Nancy, before we have to notice the public hearing, so we've got the rest of this week at least.
And, and I don't mind, I mean, I, I think it knows the public hearing, it, it wouldn't. That investigation wouldn't necessarily change the order.
Right, right.
Yep.
It would just provide us with some additional information if we end up getting two parties that are interested.
And the public hearing won't say how we're going to dispose of it, right? Isn't it just that it is?
Right, it doesn't, just, yeah.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and do that. No, not in the public hearing, public hearing, because the question for the community is, do you want to? Alright.
We all settle on that item?
I have direction.
Will we, will we then, so notice of public hearing says that, but then in our sort of discussion and preamble to the public hearing, will we? Get the public up to speed on the fact that we're considering a negotiated sale at this point, or?
So at the public hearing itself, we would, staff would then have the picture and the, whatever the investigation. Yeah, great, that's part of it, but not in. The notice of public hearing is simply making the world aware that you're considering disposing of this property. And we'll, Nancy even does a nice cut in face to tell people where it is on the face of it.
Okay.
Um.
Good, ready to move on.
So, given the lateness of the hour and the fact that I'm not a hundred percent ready.
I was going to cover for you.
No, I'm good, okay. Let me be honest.
We are going to postpone the next item, which is the post ordinance amendment, chapter two, article five, finance. Division two, purchasing. Yeah.
Yes.
And do you have any town man?
I do, I actually have um, a significant one, if that's all right.
Oh.
Um, try not to take too much of your time, so I have great news. Um, la- at uh, last week's town council meeting, you um. Gave us the authority to apply for EV charging stations. On either Tuesday or Wednesday, I can't remember if the, this is the grant that needed to be reworked, but either Tuesday or Wednesday, we applied. And Friday, we knew that we got it.
Wow.
So that's um, four plugs on two stations, one of the stations. Um, so based on the application, we have committed to putting one in the library lot. And one in the Pine Street lot. Um, we're going to have to come back to you with a proposal um, for altering the parking. Requirements in the lot that has the charger, because there would be times that. Um, for that particular type of charger, somebody would have to be there eight, up to eight hours in order to get it.
So, Sophie, I thought the pine tree lot was not the lot that it was going to come in, it was going to go.
I'm sorry, the municipal lot.
Right, because the pine tree lot doesn't have a transformer.
Town office, I'm sorry, town office lot in the, in the library.
Right.
So anyway, we need to talk about some alternative arrangements, because that might make sense. To allow somebody to park in that space overnight, to leave at eleven and come back. You know, the next morning to get their car if it's charging, understanding that we are. Um, they are paying for the electricity while they are charging. So I am here to talk to you, every once in a while, we do, we kind of do things backwards, this is going to be one of those times. Um, as part of the, the grant, we specifically wrote for um, a semi-connect. Charging station. And the reason for that, um, staff worked with um, Dan Dixon, who is the director of the Office of Sustainability on campus. And um, they, at, they added like twenty something charging stations on campus. Um, and he did a ton of research to come to that conclusion. And they discern, they determined that some connect was, that was ideal for several reasons. Um, I'm just going to quickly run through those. Um, that IT and development um, is in New England, not the West Coast or not Europe. Um, so they're quick to respond and they have quick local service, which is important to us. Um, they swap out the entire unit if something goes wrong, they don't spend time trying to make things work. Um, they'd simply come, swap it out, install the new one on the spot, and leave, go, go back home and try to fix it. It contains um, plugs that charge all types and brands of electric vehicle, it's not just a one, a one brand. Um, it does not require an app to be able to use the charger. Uh, most chargers require apps, limiting users who don't have a smartphone, need to spend time downloading and creating an account before charging. Or who are not tech savvy, so this one was determined to be significantly more user friendly across all tech. And um, income streams. Um, it has a card reader right on the machine, so you just tap your, your card. Um, but there were, it has con- contracts with several electrical companies in Maine. And already has a really good reputation with regard to that process. It is up and coming in the US, but are the biggest provider in Canada, so it's been around for quite a while, even though it's just starting. Based on all of these reasons, and the fact that it's what we put in the grant. Um, we are requesting that the town council um, consider sole source purchase for this. It's ten thousand dollars a piece approximately, um, so it's under your twenty five thousand dollar. Um, sole source, these are two separate grants, so we have to run these as two separate purchases. The way the state awarded it, it's one for the library, one for the town office. Um, because we are in hopes of trying to get this in and installed as soon as possible. And perhaps not have to wait until next spring, we would like to go ahead and order them now. Put an order on the October consent agenda for you to agree to them, but I didn't want to do that without.
Sophie, is there any money in the grant for signage, or do we have any money for signage to put up? Signs, let's say, here's our charging stations.
I'm sure.
Okay.
I'm sure even if there's not money in the grant, that we would find, so we would find some signs for that. Um, along with some other signs that need to be redone, but I've seen.
Everybody okay with the sole source?
Yes, yes. Okay. Um, and my thought is, I'll put that on the consent, simply because we just went through it in some length here. Um, also want to make you aware, on the good, the great news is Parks and Rec is off to a smashing beginning of year. Um, we have an after-school program that is averaging twenty five to thirty participants as daily. The issue is the person who runs the program, um, so the. The town oversees the program, contracts with the university to provide the staffing and the general oversight, the curriculum development for the program. Um, so the individual works for um, the university, but has given notice to go into another full-time job. So we are looking for applicants to apply to the campus recreation. For um, positions at our after-school program. So we're at a point right now where we get very many more people and, and we don't have enough staff. I think we're in the same position a lot of people are in right now, um, we would be, we would have to cap what, what we could allow. Um, in order to meet the staff, the staff ratios. So along with the Parks and Rec update, I will let folks know that along with after-schools. We have in the after-school hour, um, horseback riding, rock climbing. Um, in the five to seven, five to six thirty hour, we have soccer. Like football, field hockey, going on. And I haven't got that yet. And um, we have a new program that is designed for preschoolers, so. Three, third, three and four-year-olds. Um, that is aimed at, we call, it's called little rookies, we say basketball, soccer. And T-ball, but what we really need is using your hands with big balls. Trying some smaller balls, so it's a six-week program, the idea also is to mix it up with that age group, so it's two weeks. For each of those things, so a lot going on, soccer programs um, in our region have not. Um, been open for folks, um, so we're also seeing quite a mix, we have high, high numbers and. Um, a mix of people who are residents.
On the uh. Kids that are in the after-school program, are those all Orno residents?
They're. So they are coming out of the Orno school system, or they are one of the two. Alright, onto the next, yep. Um, we have a community facilities meeting, this is the virtual companion to the in-person meeting. That is happening tomorrow night at six o'clock, um, the. The on the, there's an agenda that's posted, there is a link on that agenda, no need to sign up or do anything, just look on the agenda. It's a meeting, so we're gonna try without the safeguards, a webinar uses, but I'm sure we can manage it. For people who can't have access to virtually but want to participate, the library community room will have this meeting going on. So people can go there, if folks have access to wifi or would prefer to sit in their car next to the library that has free wifi. There are also laptops at the library that have some London that can be checked out.
Is this a stakeholders meeting too? Is this like?
No, stakeholders are separate, we're doing those individually. Remind folks that on next Monday, we do not have council committee meetings because it is. On the twenty ninth, we have the virtual companion meeting for the municipal services public meeting, so. We had a group show up in person and now we're gonna try to do the same thing through a virtual meeting. We'll also have the same setup at the library, the thought is. Depending on the potential size of those meetings. We will hold, if we hold a hundred percent virtual meeting, we'll either open council chambers or the library. Also depending on whether or not they'll be open. We have a fall quarter schedule. It doesn't stretch to October. Also to let.
Just never know where I'm supposed to be.
To let you know how fickle fate can be, I got done telling Council Chair Perry. How awesome it was to be at full staff with the police department, police officer that had a baby decided not to come back. So down one. Police officer needed to go back home to Connecticut to be with her family. So there is down two. And our, one of our newest hires who's had a baby, who's. Had a family issue, decided to pick up stakes and move the whole family back to Minnesota. So there, we're down three, that is twenty percent of our staff. We just onboarded somebody today, so that other person, that number four. Has not had the criteria to be a reserve officer yet, so they haven't, they're not gonna be able to get to the academy until January. But so we we are now back in and staffing crunch.
Does that explain why I saw the chief at football game on set?
So not really, so football games are considered additional details for us. They are not ones that we compel people to go to, they're signups. If there are signups that are left vacant after the union has a chance at it. And if it is. Detail that is not funded through Orno taxpayer dollars, so think something we're putting on through the town for the school. The captain in chief can sign up for details they get and get paid as a sergeant. So.
Well, he wanted to do that, but wasn't.
You know where we have been awarded the safer grant, I think I I announced that, just to let you know. We will start once again, an application process, we've made some assurances around diversity. Hiring or or recruiting practices that we. Need to be able to document a little bit differently than we just, although we just did it, we need to do it again for the next round, so. On this round, we're hoping to pick up two people to fill a vacancy and a promotion out of the ranks. And. The safer grant, we hope to have out in the next few weeks. With fire, there is a physical agility piece that really needs to not be run when it's icy and really cold, even though fire scenes can be icy and really cold. Our workers' pump carriers won't like us to.
Based on the grant, when when could we actually start people with grant money?
It is the last week of February. Is the first time that we can do that, and they expect us to have them ready to go at that point. So the town has been approached by an individual who lives on Forest Avenue, who has a. Piece of property approximately seventy five by feet wide, two hundred feet long, according to the tax map. It abuts town property and Forest Avenue, so the question has been. Does the town want to purchase that property if and? I think the the idea being that we would demo the the home and create a. Public way that would connect Goodridge Drive and Forest Avenue. So. Rob is evaluating that right now for what would it look like, what would the impact be to a butters? What would the general cost be and where it comes out, is it a safe place that we would otherwise build a? A road and allow for a curb cut there. Just back of the envelope, Rob is with. Acquisition costs, Rob is suggesting it's probably three quarters of a million dollars to a million dollars to. Acquire the property and build a road that would allow for traffic to flow from Forest Avenue. So my first question is, is this worth Rob's time to evaluate? Is it something council wants pursue to the evaluation and back of the? More than back of the envelope, less than construction drawing, engineering input with that price. So we have long staff, public safety, public works staff that long said that. There are way too many dead end streets, there is way too much. The way the school is located.
Right.
Everything goes out route onto route two and it's massive congestion. We would love being able to connect, we had conversations. When the school project was going on about whether or not it would be possible to connect from what they were planning to. Rossley, you know that. Yeah, no, they didn't go well at all. But I think. This is so anytime there's an opportunity to find a way to turn a dead end into a loop. Connection, staff is going to be interested in that.
So so basically, and I'm just gonna kind of paraphrase, basically it's just getting the traffic and we during the school. When you're picking up so that parents have another route out of the school, so the back way. So people that used to live on Forest Avenue and brought their children up, had to drive all the way. And turn around, drive all the way back, and now there would be a route to go through there.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Okay. So the question is.
Yes.
We can take staff time and create a non-engineer. Assessment that you could then decide whether or not you wanted to send. To for an engineering assessment, I mean, my assumption is you wouldn't wanna sink in the purchase price of a home. Without knowing that you could build a a road and what are the approximate cost of that? I think we would also wanna get some understanding, and I think Rob's a good place to start of. The idea of coming out on the hill on Forest App, so. Think about where we own up here that we could connect to that kind of offshoot of Goodridge that comes between. The town office and. The school and.
Oh, is that what you're talking about? I was thinking.
So I'm thinking of the public section of Goodridge, that's that up the hill is the driveway. I know we call it Goodridge, but it's technically.
Oh, so you're talking right in.
Yeah, right, so you're on that hill. And so this came in just recently, Rob has not had a chance to really dig into it other than to say. You could build a road anywhere. With enough money, you can do anything. The one concern that he did aside from money that he brought up was. Whether or not it would make sense to put. An entrance or, you know, a a road on that hill, he's not sure about that. But what I wanna do is given the workload that we have. If council's saying, yeah, it's not inconceivable that we would agree to spend that much money building a road and acquiring a home. Then we should do the assessment fees, but if right off the bat, you're saying that doesn't work. Then we should let the property owner know so that they could.
You said Goodridge and I heard Westwood. Goodridge doesn't explain.
Right, so so I was thinking more that the the massive amount of traffic when school is, you know, in session. Main street, would that alleviate any of that?
Feel, the traffic that it may alleviate would be a sub traffic.
Right.
Because right now, the. Good ridges, you go from Goodridge up the hill, or you go this way. But you can't come down.
Right.
But you, but we could, you create something halfway down, wherever halfway down that hill on Forest App, you create something to avoid here, but.
But then you've got that. Yeah, it's it's busy.
The idea of it, I mean, where exactly is it, we would connect down into this parking lot down here?
It would, it would connect. So we call it half town, it's where, it's where the swell of the, it comes up. No, Rob, Rob would suggest bringing it up.
But I mean, it is parallel with that part.
Yeah. Yes.
Is it at the top or the bottom of this letting hill?
So. Ultimately, the question is.
Right.
Is it?
We do it.
I I am, Rob, if if we should explore it, I would have Rob do that. My question for you is. Rob's back of the envelope, where he has explored, puts us at three quarters of a million to a million dollars to construct it.
I can't imagine wanting to spend that money on that.
So.
Thanks for asking us.
Well, I think two things, the property taxpayer who came forward, the owner who came forward. Is suggested this as a way to to help serve his community. And.
It's just unfortunately all the wrong.
And I just.
Great idea, but it's just so long.
So I will, I will be back in touch with that problem. I just didn't think that was the one that. The last item I have for you today is. You have correspondence from. D R L slash L E I two oh one Kelly Road, Orno. And it has to do with the. The junkyard permit that you approved last week for Le Point Enterprises at two oh one Kelly Road. I have talked with Council Chair Perry, and if it is agreeable with everybody else, we're gonna set it up for. He and I will draft a letter together and get it back out. We'll also let you know that we had an application come in from this individual. For a junkyard permit at two oh one Kelly Road today. I have accepted that. Application because I've been taught it's always bad to not allow somebody to apply. And we'll be working with the town attorney as to what happens next with that.
And our response is gonna just be very factual information.
Yep.
Two oh one is now the address that we approved last.
It is.
Oh, it is.
It is, we've already.
So this is the same thing.
Yes. So I just bring that up because if you start to get inundated with other mailings, emails. Things of that nature, you are aware that we are gonna make a response later this week. To the letter you received, and I am going to pass this along to the attorney. The last piece of correspondence, it's not really to council, we did receive notice. This Friday from. From Field Energy that they are appealing the the. The denial of their abatement request with regard to the hydro. So we are kinda working our way through that, it will go through the local board of assessment review. And make a swing through that process. We still, the only other abatement that is hanging out there from FY twenty two, which is last year. Would be a request from City Park Seven, which is the owner of the avenue. We've done a seven oh six A request for information, it came back as incomplete, we have made another request. So we have not made a finding on that, but we have agreed to move it. The extend the deadline for the request mutual agreement and writing, so. But that's another, those are, they're only two, unfortunately, they're both quite sorry.
I'm not up to speed or I'm not sure what you're talking about, they filed for what, for what?
An abatement for a reduction in their last year's tax bill.
So it's something they've already asked for and was denied, or no, this is this is the first pass.
Field Energy asked for was denied, they've asked for, they go to the local board of assessment review. It if a abatement goes to the local board of assessment review, if it is residential. It whatever the local board decides is the town's final answer and they can go to superior court. For to appeal it, when they go to court to appeal it, the avenue that the court's looking at is very, very. Very narrow, it's essentially, was there something manifestly wrong and illegal in the action that the board took? Not a finding of fact all over again. If it is commercial over a million dollars in value, which City Park Seven would. Or Field, either one of them qualify. It doesn't go to court, it goes to the state board of taxation, where they do a denovo review, which is. You essentially have a hearing all over again, you can submit new information, it's the same thing. And it's incredibly expensive.
For all parties?
Yes.
And so and and if it's commercial, first step is still overboard?
Yep, it goes to the local board when they file at the state board. Then it goes to mandatory mediation, oftentimes it's settled there, if it's not settled there. No, no, well, I represent the town along with the assessor who represents the assessor.
Sophie, last time we think that there's, there was some kind of a clause in our contract and they got their tax abatement? Has that been taken care of?
So they they were abated in two thousand twenty one, they applied for an abatement, they were granted an abatement for a. Portion of what they asked for, it was a portion that resulted in, I wanna say, two hundred and one thousand dollar return.
Right.
The the issue that they raised, I think this is all public, the issue that they raised that we. We agreed with.
Right.
Was that, so from Field Energy has a renewable energy contract to sell. Renewable energy credits to an entity in Rhode Island. Every year, it's a fifteen year contract, so every year the value of that contract decreases because there's one less year of potential energy sales. So we had not. Dropped the value. So one of the things that we did is we brought in the state's preeminent municipal assessor who just. He does a lot of commercial work and collectible work, hydro work. And he came back, it's okay, here's your mistake, we now engage him annually to calculate the value. So it's, they already have a decrease from twenty one to twenty two.
Right.
They they wanted more.
Right.
And Bill Van Tynan, who's the deputy tax assessor for this particular situation. Said, I reviewed it, I've looked at what you've given me and I don't agree. So now they are appealing to the local board of assessment review. If they don't get. If they don't get the abatement they're seeking, they will likely appeal to the state.
Yeah, and and just, they have a reputation of doing that.
Oh, yes.
All of their. All of their, right, all of their municipalities.
So, um, the news is that um, this abatement would come out of the. Taxing from the financing district if we have funds available there. If we don't, we would then have to um, do it out of the, the general.
There should be law against that. Yeah, something like that.
Any other business for us tonight? Can I just put a plug in again for the, for the lights on the bridge?
So you can put as many plugs in as you want, Leo. Um, Rob has been contacting the vendor. There is a vendor that we use for this. They are stacked up with other priorities like streetlights. That manage traffic flow and stuff like that. He's been on them, but we are kind of at their mercy at this moment.
So obviously, safety concerns.
The, I think the, I couldn't even put out temporary lights because there's electricity. That the issue is the lights are fine. It's the electricity that is broken. That serves the light. So I can't even put out temporary lights.
Sometimes a squeaky wheel gets the grease, so.
He's. Yep.
I don't mean he pounded raw.
I think Rob has been helping them.
I'm concerned about it as well, but a little silver lining on it is the stars look wonderful.
Um, I had a quick question about how folks can apply to be on the DEI committee, which I understand applications are still being accepted.
Yep, so it's um, on your calendar to review this on October third. So we normally would package that up, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday before the meeting. Um, if you go on the website right now under DEI council action. There is a whole bunch of information. There's a link to the volunteer um, application.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and um, also the charge. And if you don't see it, you should. Update your cachet. Um, so you brought it up. We looked and we updated the website.
Okay, great. So that got updated this afternoon. Well, thank you for the speedy attention to that. Check it out.
There it is.
Great.
And I'll put a plug in for the uh, Orno efficiencies fair. We're waiting to lock and roll, so we've got. Megan's got posters up and so just tell people.
And I think part of, also part of the desire was if we could get counselors to make an appearance and have a picture taken. That would be an important piece. Even a selfie, I'm at the fair.
October.
Twenty second. Yeah, it's a Saturday. So, yeah, well, already it goes. So it's nice. Megan's done a lot of work and it's been, it's been good.
So the auditors are remote, but doing the audit. Um, Zach is doing a phenomenal job for this being his first one and having just taken over the role. Um, that said, my um, my week is really, really booked. So if you have a need and I don't respond, maybe immediately text or call when these things are starting to stack up. Okay.
Awesome.
Ready to adjourn? Motion adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor of it? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.